Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And I will at 7:04 PM. And I will take roll call now. So Amy Lyford.
Here.
Billy Malone.
Yeah.
Donald McCormick. Yeah, okay. Dorothy Wong.
Here.
Hannah Petrie.
Here.
John Carmody.
Here.
Chris O'Malley.
Here.
Yep. Veronica Jones.
Here.
Daryl Aranda.
Hello.
Madeline Barber.
Here.
Alan Peck.
Here.
Dan Harlow.
Here.
Who sounds so excited. Doug Cauliflower.
Here.
Diane Marcusson and Sylvia Vega. Hang on, let me just. Oh, okay, I have to send Sylvia the Zoom link. And so I'll put her present and then give me just a second to.
You want me to send it to her and you keep on with.
That would be, that would be great Veronica's. Yeah, so Sylvia needs the credentials again. Okay. So I sent the meeting agenda out and I have not heard any comments or changes. Can I get a motion to approve it as distributed?
So moved.
Okay, and is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of approving today's agenda as distributed, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Okay, we'll move forward with that agenda. We have two months of meeting minutes to approve. Daryl, I think you had the December 7th one. Thanks for sending that out again. And I don't know, did you get any comments back? Okay, so do you want to do a motion to approve as distributed?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the December minutes as distributed, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Okay, great, thank you. And then the March 1st minutes that Chris did, thank you.
Motion to accept.
Oh, Chris, did you get any changes?
I did not.
Okay, so thank you, Daryl. I'll take your motion to accept as distributed. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Alan. All those in favor of approving the March minutes as distributed, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain?
I'm abstaining since I wasn't there.
Great, Amy, thank you very much, yes. Okay. Um, okay, I have a relatively quick chairman's report. Um, but I, a couple of things. I, there was a document that went out that I know has been distributed. I think you've all received it. And I know it's out in the community regarding the housing element. And the housing, that housing element document is a document that has been completed and sent off to the state. And that was part of the state requirements for the California housing issues that are going on. And everybody had to do their housing element report and send it on. That is absolutely positively not etched in cement. It is the recommendation of the county folks that worked on that to get a report off. In the meantime, there is going to be an effort that is, some of you may have heard, the West San Gabriel Valley Plan that is going to be put together. They are working on the East San Gabriel Valley Plan now. And they will start working, I think, what I heard today, that they'll start working on the West San Gabriel Valley Plan sort of by the end of the year this year. And we will, you know, I'm gonna look into it some more and see who we need to really do that. But one of the things that we will do with that is we will be able to revise our CSD. It will give us an opportunity to revise our CSD that we would not ordinarily have. And we can look into the things that we may need to change related to mixed use and ADUs and all of that. So we also, I think probably they suggested that we look at our entire CSD. I forget when we did that, has it been 10 years yet?
No, it hasn't.
No, eight years?
Yeah, about.
Yeah. But we can look at it again. So that will be something that we will be working on. I have asked them to come talk to us at our meeting in May. So we'll have a presentation from the regional planning regarding both just answering questions about the ADUs, if we have any, and how, you know, how that all works in the, in LA County and Altadena. And then also to talk to us about this West San Gabriel Valley Plan and what can happen. So I just want to make sure everybody is understanding. What I learned today is that there are a whole bunch of moving numbers and codes and different ways that the properties are are put together as far as. Um, I don't know, sorry, it's a lot, it's a lot. I'm trying to remember all the things that they said to us. The, um, what they, what they looked at is there are, they actually, they partially went and looked at our general plan, which our community plan was done like 30 years ago or something. So in any case, if you look at that report and you look at Altadena, you will see that when we first got presentation from them and saw that the properties they were looking at was, were spread out literally all over Altadena. What they came out with was, in the end, was we'll put them all on Lake. And I suggested to them that we may want to revisit that where we can. So that's what, they'll be able to talk to us about that next month. And then we'll also put together maybe a, a working committee to work with them on the West San Gabriel Valley Plan that they're putting together. Does anybody have questions on that? I know it's kind of a little bit high. Anyway, so yeah, so we'll have them come next month. Did anybody have any, sorry, let me.
Sylvia is trying to get in.
She's trying to get in?
Yeah, passing the media.
Chris, Chris, can you let Sylvia in, please? There's, there she is. Yeah? Okay. So does anybody, oh, Dorothy, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to also mention that the safety elements of the general plan that does, has some, has connection as well to, you know, the whole general plan. That went through the Board of Supervisors today, sort of their first.
Right, but that's, yeah, but that's not related to the housing element, right?
Well, somehow they're interconnected, so just thinking as you describe.
Yeah. So, so I just want to make sure everybody, let me just say one more time. The housing element document that went out to everybody that has caused some concern, and I, I don't, I mean, I totally understand it, is, is not anything that's been finalized. And the time that it will be, what they told me today was that the time that it will be finalized is in two years, 2024. So there is work to be done and things that we can look at, although I don't know what all of those are and they're not promising us, but we can certainly have the opportunity to go and, you know, talk to them about it. Alan?
So this is completely separate from the issue with the Build 9, you know, that enables you to split properties and have two ADUs and two, this is a completely separate issue?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, there, there are, there are a lot of moving parts, right? There's SB9, there's a whole bunch of different things. This is where the state of California came to everybody in California and said, go through your communities. And they had to come up with a certain amount of percentage of properties that could be used as housing ultimately and that need to be rezoned in order to do that. So this is what they did was they went through and looked at the properties to see if they could, what they could rezone to include residential.
And they had to, they had to be zoned at a particular density too.
That's right.
And because, to be clear, and you can drive up and down Lake today, there are buildings that are mixed use on Lake today.
Yes.
They were not of the density that the state is really, you know, requesting or requiring, so.
What I did learn today, and this is gonna be, you know, an ongoing conversation. I don't wanna, I want to make sure everybody's understand what I'm saying, is that the, what we have the opportunity to do is to look and see other locations to see if, well, first of all, I think what we need to do is really understand what the impact could be on Lake. That's the first thing, so we really understand what we're looking at. But the other thing is that we have the opportunity to look at other properties all over Altadena. I mean, there were, I didn't really understand, there were things on Washington that were identified originally on Allen, you know, on Hill, all these places. So anyway, what I want everybody to know is that it's not real yet. It's, it's not anything that's gonna be implemented. And the people will come next, or the person will come next month to talk to us about it. And then we can, we can go from there. And it, we're two years away from anything being real. Yes, Amy?
I'm curious, you mentioned creating a working group. How will we create that working group? And how quickly should we do that? I mean, it strikes me if there's going to be, if they're gonna come with a presentation at our May meeting, it might be worthwhile considering having the EC or Executive Council consider putting that group together prior to that meeting so that those folks are for sure present and can ask more pointed questions.
What we did, let me, what we did when we did our CSD eight years ago, seven years ago, whatever that was, is we, you know, we came up, we identified people from the community and from the town council. And Dan was part of, Daniel was part of that committee and worked countless hours to try to go through all the whole, the whole thing. They won't even talk to us about changing, about even discussing anything they told me until the end of this year. They are totally swamped with East San Gabriel Valley Plan. And so I think we have time to come up with a, you know, with a plan ourselves. And I mean, it's April and we're probably not talking until October, November. Alan?
But this rezoning for high-density residential housing is what will allow them to build four-story buildings, so on Lake.
No, that is not true, Alan, don't start that.
That's why, I'm trying to find that out.
Oh, okay. Don't start that rumor, no.
I, I, what, what is the case with regard?
No, so, so I don't know, Daniel, do you have a better description than I do? It's.
Oh, I'd have, I'd have to. Yeah, so they're changing it from MU to CG, which is general commercial, which there's a whole description. I, I can find the link again of what the differences between those two were. It is a denser thing, but because we have the CSD with height, height limits in there, those would still apply. So where they're getting around the height limits, like on, on another building that's not on Lake, has to do with low-income housing, which is a state law that over, that overrules, you know, county law no matter what. But, you know, we always knew that was gonna be a possibility with CSD. But it has to do with like parking, how, how many units they can put in it. There, there's definitely some differences there between MU and CG. I, I don't, it's, it's not, it's not a bad thing to go from MU to CG on some of these properties, because some of them were already pretty dense, if you look at them.
Right.
Not them all, obviously. There are others that were low dense, lower density that are gonna be essentially what they call upzoned. I, I do think it would be worth looking at some other, changing the zoning of other properties. So it is rare we get to change zoning of properties, just so the, the committee knows. And it might be an opportunity, even though they concentrate those mostly on Lake, to look at some of our industrial-zoned properties are in Altadena, to change them from industrial to commercial, because that would go more with the community. And so especially if you, if you think about some of the areas along Woodbury that are zoned industrial now, changing those to commercial would probably be a better impact, you know? Even though it means they could put, you know, potential three-story building there, it might be more compatible with the surrounding community. So I'm sure Daryl, Daryl knows what I'm talking about there. So, so.
Yeah.
But, but yeah, so it's definitely a density increase. It's not necessarily a height increase. It talks about, it has to do with parking and some other stuff. Several of our, our areas there, like we already, they're essentially commercial today, even though they're an MU zoning, right? So.
Right. And, and the, and density is like the number of units that you have in the, in the building, right? And not the number of people necessarily. So that, yeah, so I think, I think as we go, what I wanted to tell everybody tonight was just that the document that's out there and going around is not finished. I mean, it's finished as far as what we had, what the county had to submit to the state. But there's another whole process that's gonna go on after that for the next two years. And we'll just make sure that we're on top of that with, with the county. And they'll be here next month for you to ask questions of as far as their timing and what they, you know, what they see and what they think. And then as we did with the CSD, I'm thinking that the Land Use Committee will put together, or Town Council Executive Committee, however we end up doing that, put together a group of people that will see and look through the, there's the woman that's, at least one of the women, I know at least one woman is coming next month, and she'll be able to talk to us offline too about, you know, how she thinks that we should look at all the different properties and stuff, so. And we can, what she's saying is that there's possibility that we can look at another area and, and sort of say, oh, this one building on Lake is really important to us. If it were taller, it would block the, I don't, you know, there are all these things that, that might happen on Lake. We can say, oh, well then, we need to be able to swap out the same density somewhere, somewhere else. And anyway, so, and, and yeah, if you're on Lake, you should look particularly just a little bit north of New York Drive. There are a couple of buildings that are mixed use where they're commercial at the bottom and then two layers of apartments. And I think there's a new one going in, that's on the east side of the street. And I think there's a new one going on on the west side of the street or thinking about it. Okay. Thanks very much for your time on that. I just really want to make sure that when you're out there talking to folks, if they're worked up about the Lake Avenue piece of the housing element, that it's early to be, we'll get worked up when we know we really need to get worked up. And we do that really well, so they'll have to, they'll see us coming. Okay. I'm gonna move on to our item, Dorothy Wong, you have your item, your small cell project that you are gonna present.
Yes, Hannah, would you like to introduce the project?
Yes, it's Cell Phone Tower Fun Time, specifically in regards to the item PRJ 2021-003748, AT&amp;T Altadena-002. This is the correct address this time, 455 El Prieto, Altadena. And basically, AT&amp;T proposes a sectorized small cell site at the Lincoln Avenue Water Company property located at 455 El Prieto. And I believe we have a presentation, but I'll turn it back to you, Dorothy.
Thank you, Hannah. So I would like to, so after our last meeting, we did more sort of communication, obviously, with the community and also with Adrian. So he has then revised the presentation a bit to answer some questions that the community had. So Adrian, are you ready to share your screen? Adrian is with the Yukon Group.
Yes.
That is leading this project.
Okay, so, let's see here. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, everyone, my name's Adrian Colici. I am with Yukon Group, we're an architecture, engineering, and permitting firm representing AT&amp;T. And thank you for the introduction. And we just have a slightly updated presentation from before to give you first an introduction to small cells in general and then the, the project itself, and then show you some examples of small cells in, well, at least one in the area and some around, some around town. So first of all, what are small cells? Well, actually, let me, let me, let me first start by giving you guys some statistics. Ever since the introduction of the iPhone in 2006, there's been something of a revolution in the way data has been processed over wireless networks. And this has led to everything from the streaming phenomenon to things such as this, this Zoom call, which are now basically accepted means of both entertainment and conducting business. But what this has resulted in is a 360,000 increase in data traffic from January 2007 through, well, December 2017, when the survey was conducted. So needless to say, AT&amp;T's wireless network is struggling to meet, meet the demand, which essentially is the ability to allow a customer with, with a cellphone or tablet or connected PC to be able to stream a high-definition video. And that is, that is a primary function of what these devices are capable of doing and what customers expect of these devices. Now, previously, the, the traditional way of cover or providing wireless coverage is through, has been through macro sites. Now, macro sites are, first, let me show you what they look like. If just, this is a comparison of just the sheer size of, of macro sites versus small cells. Macro sites would be typically 50 to 80 feet high, either straight monopoles or faux trees or rooftop facilities that are, that are, that consist of typically 12, 6 to 8-foot panel antennas arranged in groups of four, three groups of four. And they point out in the direction that they need to meet with, say, the other antennas on the network. Now, these sites provide coverage for up to approximately one to two, sometimes even up to three miles, depending on how flat the topography is. Now, as you know, wireless radio frequency signals are our line of sight technology. That means if there's a physical object such as a hill or even a man-made object such as a residential structure or commercial structure, it will block the signal to a certain percentage. So those are some of the challenges and, which is why antennas need to be typically raised high up in the air to provide the most efficient coverage possible. And also, if you, by providing the most efficient coverage possible, you need fewer sites. So that's why, that's been the way macro cells have been deployed since the early, since the early 90s. But now we're living in this new world where there's only so many macro sites that can be placed in a given geographic area. Thus, the solution to providing, to increasing the capacity of the wireless networks has been to add small cells in various places under the umbrella coverage of, of a macro site. So whereas a macro site would cover an area of, say, a radius of one to two miles, a small cell will cover anywhere from about 4 to 800 feet, depending on the topography. And sometimes a little longer, it really just kind of depends on the line of sight specific to the location. Now, these, these small cells are typically placed on streetlights or attached to wooden utility poles or placed on new wood utility poles. But they, instead of 50 to 80 feet, they can be brought down to around 30 feet on the average. So it's, they're also correspondingly low-powered, so that you have to think of them more as like a super Wi-Fi hotspot or something of that nature that you would find in a library or a civic center or a shopping mall or a sports arena. Previously, these used to be called DOS networks. And they're special use cases placed in places like, you know, sports arenas to increase capacity because of all the great number of people collected in one area. So small cells, we fit them wherever, wherever we can find space on utility poles. However, in the instance of our, our specific proposal, there, there has been no right-of-way solution that was found. However, we did find an interested property owner in the water company, which is where this is proposed. Okay, let's see here. Now, here is, here are some examples of small cells that are placed typically on streetlights. So this gives you an idea of the type of gear that is used compared to a macro, which you are, you would see like on the side of freeways with 12 large panel antennas. These, these small cells contain one canister antenna typically. Or in our case, since this is a sectorized small cell, they're split into three panel antennas. Okay, so this is an example of a small cell in the Altadena area off of, I can barely read my, my, the writing on that.
Aurelia.
Yes, thank you. My glasses are failing me here on Aurelia. So what you're looking at here is a, an existing Southern California Edison utility pole. And this was, everything was here except for the cross arm you see about, I'd say about 60% of the way up there and the small canister antenna on the left of the arm. And there's four radio, small radio units on the arm to the right of it. Now, if you look at the ground, just, just in front of the pole, you will see some handholds, which are splice boxes for fiber and power. So this is a typical gear that, this is the entire site. There's, there's no equipment cabinets. So this is as small as they can make a site in the public right-of-way. And so now, let me introduce you to the location, the hilltop location of, actually, this is probably the best view of 4554 El Prieto. As you can see, in, in the middle, middle of the satellite image, there is the water tank. And where it's pointing at with subject site is the location of the, of the first of two poles that are proposed at this location. And this pole number one is on the northwest side of the property. And pole number two is on the southeast side of the property. They are both 35-foot-high poles. Okay, this is a photo simulation of one, but let me hold on a second. Here we go. All right, this is an elevation view, which there is an existing wood utility pole on site. And we are placing one pole next to, next to that. And the other pole is placed on the southeast side. They're both 35 feet high. Now, first, this is the view from the access road just, just north. Let's see, this is where number two is on the, on the satellite map over here. So we're approximately looking east. So you, as you can see, the existing utility pole on site and our pole right next to it. Now, switching over to Rising Hill Road, there would be, this is a photo simulation showing what it would look like from the southeast. And you can barely make out the, the proposed pole where the red arrow is pointing at due to the distance involved there. You can also see the existing retaining walls for the, for the water tank property. And you can also see the fencing from the, on the property line. So this, this, this provides an introduction to this project. And I can answer any questions that you or the community have about the project now. Thank you very much.
If I could, real quickly, Chris Miller, are you there? Chris O'Malley is trying to get back into the meeting. And if you're around, if you could try to. And if you're around, if you could try to let him in, that'd be great. I'm sorry, please go ahead.
Oh, that that concludes my presentation if uh and I can answer any questions from from the public or from the town council.
Does anybody have any questions? Oh, wait, can you? Well, okay. Does anybody have any questions? I can't see all of you, so please speak up.
We stop sharing screen, Diane.
Well, we can, I guess, if he can pull it back up, if somebody has a question, they need to see it.
I paused the share. Is it still? Let's see here. End the share.
Yeah, to end the share and then reshare, I guess, if we need to see anything. I mean, but we did see pretty much of this we saw last time.
Yeah.
Yes, if you can stop sharing, then I can see everybody and then I can see who has questions.
Let's see here.
I see Amy, you could ask while we're
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
I have a question more about, I know that there are some folks who have concerns about radio waves in their neighborhood, electrical equipment. And I wonder if you could talk a little bit about the the power, not just the power required to run this, but also if there are any um concerns that have ever been raised about such uh kind of repeater, small, small cell towers being this close to um individual houses. I'm not saying there is a problem, but I I know that there are some folks out there in the world who do have concerns about that.
I'm sure. Uh, let's see. Well, first of all, just wanted to state that the site will be in full compliance with all radio frequency uh safety emissions guidelines by the FCC. And it will be part of an ongoing compliance program. As so as soon as the site is built, before it's even turned on the air, uh AT&T has to the to demonstrate compliance with all the safety rules, which would entail the amount of power that the that the site is being run at and which dictates, for example, the safe distance for the public versus safe distance for workers. So once once the site is brought online, that is demonstrated with an EMF report by an engineer uh by a radio frequency engineering company. And that has to be demonstrated, provided to both the FCC and to Los Angeles County as part of the conditions of approval. Um, and this also has to be, the site will be reevaluated on a yearly basis to for both, again, for both the FCC and for LA County. So these will be kept on file and and this will be done for the duration of the the site's life. Now, as far as concerns, there hasn't been, there's never been anything, I guess, proven as far as health issues rising from one of these small cells. So that's really all we can leave it at since there is, there are no, there are none that are known of. But again, the site will be in full compliance with with the regulations as far as the FCC goes.
Okay, that's very helpful. I guess the only last question I have is, obviously, we're in Altadena here and where this location is is very close to the Angeles National Forest and fire zones and things like that. And I know uh I'm just wondering, is part of the FCC compliance and the EMF report, is that going to address anything related to power and the capacity for if something goes wrong for anything to spark um the way a transformer would on a, you know, on a pole for electricity?
Oh, I I understand your question, but it's it's the EMF report is the wrong uh form for that. That would be a structural analysis report, which will also be provided to the building safety department once, when when we get to the building um to the building permit stage. So when we apply for a building permit, we will we will submit a structural analysis of the pole and its ability to withstand wind forces based on the weight that's placed on it. So again, it will be in full compliance with with uh LA County building regulations. Which which apply to also, you know, to wood utility poles, et cetera. But as far as um the pole itself will will not be wood, it'll just be painted to look like wood. So it's it's not a fire hazard and it can't catch fire, in other words.
Thank you. I really appreciate your detailed response.
Yeah, thank you.
And I apologize, I'm trying to figure out how to uh
There should be a maybe at the top, maybe at the top of the screen, it says unshare or stop sharing.
Yeah, I, okay, I see a ribbon that it's I'm going from left to right. It says mute, stop video, participants chat, new share.
That's at the bottom, right?
It's at the top, but I
Yeah, you
Oh.
You need to resume the share and then you can stop it.
Oh, okay.
Or you should be able to.
Here we go. Okay, so it says pause, now it says pause share.
Should be right next to the the pause.
It says new share. Oh, I see stop share. It's like this, it's the smallish uh red button. That's just sorry about that, guys.
There you go. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all right.
They pay me the big bucks, you know.
That's right. Now that I can see everybody, um are there any more questions? And then we'll go, Dorothy has some um feedback. Go ahead, Dorothy.
Well, it does anyone else have questions first?
Yeah, I I just want confirmation and it kind of ties into Amy's last question. I think last time you were able to confirm that the power for these poles was going to be run underground to them, right?
Okay, that's confirmed.
Yeah.
Okay, um Dorothy, do you want to summarize your?
I do, but I have a couple of questions quick. So Adrian, can you speak about the potential for co-location?
Yes. Um, one of the conditions of approval for for the planning department is that AT&T will has to agree to co-locate either on the poles or on the or on the property. That's uh co-location versus cohabitation. And uh it we agree, we fully agree to it. There's always an intermod study done when when this happens to make sure that the new antennas don't interfere with AT&T antennas and vice versa. So absolutely.
Thank you. And then can you just speak to noise again? What kind of noise?
Um, the there, the antennas, so there's three, there's several components to this. There's the antennas, which are connected to the radio units, which are connected to the the power meter. Antennas don't emit noise. The radio units are like, think of them as like little mini PCs. Um, they're about the size of a small backpack. And there basically are little PCs with the, you know, bunch of uh radio gear and it plugged into the motherboard as well. However, there's a heat sink and a and a fan attached to the motherboard. So uh that's for vent, you know, venting heat. So the only noises is from the little PC fan on the inside. So that'll be, that's, nobody's gonna hear that from two feet away, you know?
Yeah, and that'll be on the uh uh east side, the rising hillside.
Correct. That that'll, there will be a small equipment, a wood fenced equipment area uh south uh southwest of the second proposed pole, right along the property line. So no equipment will be visible offsite. And it'll just be a, right now, it's a chain link fence. So I guess, oh, you know, a wood utility fence is a little bit nicer than chain link, but uh it'll be still be behind the chain link. So and there will be an electric meter, uh the radio units and like an H, an H frame to hold everything. So it's not sitting on the ground.
Okay, one last question. The three antennas, which pole has the two?
The one on the east, the the rising, the rising side one.
Okay, okay. Does that help uh get further distance for coverage?
Um, yeah, if if you, I guess, if you look at the topography from there, the panel antennas are directional. So the 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 south side valley from the hilltop there is more expansive. So we're trying to provide a bit more coverage on that side versus the northwest side where it's the valleys a bit more constricted. And there's, you know, also fewer homes in that area. So we're also trying to keep everything at a minimal size and number of antennas. One, one reason we went with a split sector design is that this allows us to use same size poles as as the existing utility poles on site. So it'll just look like another utility pole. You really won't see much, much, I could, antenna itself is smaller than a your typical transformer by a by by a by a lot, you know? So this, if if we were to go with an omnidirectional antenna, such as you saw on the wood utility pole in the other Altadena site, we would need a, we would need to centralize it uh on the property and raise it up higher. So we'd, we'd probably need like a fifty foot pole to be able to shoot into the valleys on either side. But by using two mini poles, we're able to, you know, cover both sides of the valley with visual, with min- very minimal visual impact.
Okay, thank you. That's the end of my questions. I I'm just uh helping answer some of the questions that the residents had.
Sure.
We just want to keep moving, Dorothy.
Yes.
Okay. I'm just, no, it's okay. Part of it's my fault because I had a report this much, so go ahead.
No, so I just wanted to roll into then the feedback. So um so uh the first time through, I started on the El Prieto side and, you know, last month's meeting. And then this month's meeting, I actually started on the rising hillside. Um, so generally speaking, um I covered about fifty homes. Uh, and of that, there were two homes concerned about access uh and probably uh four homes that were concerned about um what Amy asked about the effects of the radio frequency. And then thirty people were in favor of it. And then probably about ten people were indifferent. Uh, well, obviously, then people didn't, there were some people who just didn't respond. So um but it was kind of consistent, which was my cell service sucks here. So I used um my wifi to use my cellular phone. There was a probably the majority of the people, when I was able to ask what service they use, were actually using AT&T. So they were happy uh to know that their service would be enhanced. Uh, others who had services like Verizon, T-Mobile was also probably second on the list. Verizon and Sprint um were the other ones. So they were just really disappointed because they're like, well, it won't help us. So we have some comments. But generally speaking, uh on the top end of El Prieto, we'll have some comments to read about access. Uh, and then as we went down, the homes were empty, like people weren't living there. And then as we went down, uh people are working from home more uh and welcome to anything that would help their coverage. This included families, um, you know, our our more senior uh community members that answered the door. So does anyone have any questions? Generally speaking, most people um were in favor. So I would say sixty percent were in favor, twenty percent were indifferent and you know, the other were concerned about either the effects of the RF or access. Any thoughts, questions? So we have comments to read. Is that what we want to do next?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, Hannah, did you receive the comments?
I have at least one of them. Okay, this is from Steve Sloman. I'll read it as fast as I can. And against the installation of a cellphone tower in the Meadows neighborhood, at the location given, near the Lincoln Avenue Avenue Water Reservoir, there are about twenty-five houses within five hundred feet of the tower. My particular house on Rising Hill is about eight hundred and fifty feet from the tower location. I am sure that every resident near the top of El Prieto will be against installation of a tower. My research indicates that the radiation danger is probably low, but still, it's just the beginning of a slippery slope of installing more and more cellphone towers in the area. Personally, I don't use a cellphone at home, so I have no need of cellphone service at home. I have an AT&T landline phone. As an alternative, a similar site with probably similar coverage exists at the water tank site above La Vina at the same height as the El Prieto reservoir. Only about ten homes are within five hundred feet of that location. Why not have AT&T propose a cellphone tower for that location? I guarantee you that zero La Vina residents will be in favor of that. Cellphone service is not critical to quality of life as is water and electricity service. There is no need to keep adding more and more cellphone towers to our environment. In any case, you should have at least, you should at least have a comprehensive poll of the Meadows and La Vina residents to determine the neighborhood support for the project such as this. If you get greater than seventy seven, seventy percent support with a significant number of total responses, then there might be an argument for installation of the tower at either location. But I doubt that support for the tower will exceed thirty percent and it would be highly improper to ram it down the throat to the local residents. This then obviously begs the question, how many people in the uppermost one thousand feet of the Meadows would benefit from AT&T mobile service? Obviously, if AT&T service is unusable or unreliable, they probably now have something else like Verizon or T-Mobile. If that's the case, their needs are presently being served. There's no need for AT&T mobile service from an added antenna. This sounds like an attempt by AT&T to just steal the business from their carriers with no net increase of customers being served. Where I live on Rising Hill below the reservoir, my wife has reliable Verizon cellphone service. So I assume other Meadows residents would also be able to receive Verizon service. I think the land use committee needs to gather a lot more data about what the needs are, whether people would change from their present carrier and why. And whether the town council needs to be responsive to every business interest which wants to expand in Altadena. If there were no cellphone service in the Meadows, I'd be all for it. But this new tower seems like a solution to a non-existent problem. Thanks, Steve Slobin. And okay, here's one from Amanda Hunter, uh William and Amanda Hunter. Thank you for bringing the proposed cell site information to us at forty-six, ten Rising Hill Road. Our family of four checked cell tower locations before we bought our home in the Meadows in two thousand nineteen. We do not want any cell sites close to our home or bodies. We would expect significant safety data supplied to all residents before a decision of this magnitude can be reached. Sincerely, William and Amanda Hunter. And one more. Uh, this from Mary Trailer. As regards the Lincoln Avenue Water Company cell site construction at its reservoir parcel, have all issues and concerns regarding any adverse effects of RF energy on water and humans been addressed with review of pertinent and expert studies? I have read the following. As per the American Cancer Society, cell towers increase the risk of health hazards such as headaches, memory loss, congenital disabilities, and cardiovascular stress. Many studies also report that cell towers may lead to cancer as they emit non-ionizing high radio frequency waves. Although several oncologists have reported that RF waves are not carcinogenic, cancer-causing, long-term exposure to such waves is detrimental to the health of residents. So I went to the American Cancer Society's website and found this under its cancer tab, cellphone towers. The widespread use of cell phones in recent decades has led to a large increase in the number of cellphone towers, also known as base stations, being placed in communities. These towers have electronic equipment and antennas that receive and transmit cellphone signals using radio frequency waves. Cellphone towers are still relatively new, and many people are understandably concerned about whether the RF waves they give off might possibly have health effects. At this time, there's no strong evidence that exposure to RF waves from cellphone towers causes any noticeable health effects. However, this does not mean that the RF wave from cellphone towers have been proven to be absolutely safe. Most expert organizations agree that more research is needed to help clarify this, especially for any possible long-term effects. Please reread, most expert organizations agree that more research is needed to help clarify this, especially for any possible long-term effects regards Mary Trailer. That's it.
Okay, then, go ahead. And then just quickly, in the, in just uh following up, um, the other concerns were accessed, uh so the residents, two of the residents that live north of uh of uh on the private portion are concerned about the impacts and and the access points there. So
I don't know what that means.
Uh, that it's a private road and that ultimately the water tower usage is for water only and not for added um projects like this project. That was one of the
Yeah, it's Lincoln Avenue Waters property and, you know, if they want to, yeah.
That was a comment.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
The other comment was just more people up there means more um trash and things that are, that can impact their quality. The other comment was just more people up there means more, um, trash and things that are, that can impact their quality of life. So those
And, and I think, um, it in the, the, um, there will only be like once a year or something that anybody's up there. Is that right?
Um, well, the facility, first of all, is unmanned, so there will be, there will be no continuous traffic or anything like that, or people coming to hang out at the site. It'll, it's, uh, it'll be maintained approximately once a month. Someone will basically come and check on it, check the, check the meter, make sure there's no graffiti. Um, and this, again, this is part of the conditions of approval for LA County. So we're, AT&amp;T is required to perform these maintenance checks once a month. Uh, again, if, so if there's been vandalism or, or graffiti or anything of that nature, AT&amp;T is required to have it cleaned up and fixed within a certain amount of time. So I think it's like 48 hours or something.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, yeah, it's important for, yeah, it's important. I think it's important for all of us to note and, and the community as well that, that, you know, we're, we're an advisory organization that will send down to the county what we've heard from the, um, from the folks, but the, the, uh, regional planning is and, and building and safety as they get into construction. They're going, they have all kinds of requirements about what they, what the companies have to do in order to put these cell phones up. And it sounds, cell phone towers, I should say, or small cells. And it sounds to me as if they have actually increased their requirements. It didn't used to be that those would be parts of the, uh, conditions. Um, and we'll be able to get to read those too as they put them together.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, okay, go ahead.
Uh, yes, so, uh, so to that point, I then, to the health concerns that people did bring up, um, I tried to then find, uh, other small cell sites that existed in the Meadows and, um, I could only find, um, again, the, uh, picture that, um, Mr. Calisi showed of the 4231 Aurelia Road uh, as an AT&amp;T. So I guess my point is, who knows that information? So I requested, uh, from the supervisor's office if they could help us identify other small cell sites that are in the community. I mean, in driving around, um, or on my bike, I didn't see a lot of cell, um, you know, small cell sites on the poles, but I, I didn't comb the entire neighborhood. And so anyway, I just wanted
If I, if I can just interject one thing, if you want to see a lot of small cells, go to Pasadena and drive around like the downtown area. They're everywhere attached to, look on streetlights and on, on even, uh, like street signals. So they're
Yeah, and
They're very ubiquitous.
Over here, they're on, we, you know, we had a project, they're on top of the, I don't know if you know where Vanderhoff's veterinarian is, but that building has cell, uh, small cells on top of it. The Armenian, um, community center over here has, uh, Armin's Market has, so they're, you have to really look, um, to, to see where they are. So, okay, so are we ready to, to have a motion?
So two more points is, then I noticed, uh, I found the Wireless Facilities Design Guide that LA County has. So that's just, that was published in 2022. So anyway, my point is, I don't know comprehensively all of the, you know, the cell coverage and that maybe should be a concern, um, you know, over time. That would be, anyway, I just wanted to say that out loud in my discovery, because in 2017, AT&amp;T cell sites, there were 50. Um, and then about half of them have actually been installed. 2017, there's a regional planning document.
Oh, yes.
Yes, well, there, there have been a number of projects in the last five years, um, probably that have put small cells all over the place up here. So
Yeah.
And, and Verizon did it by right. And AT&amp;T submitted a, we, we actually reviewed that project.
Okay, last thing is Lincoln Avenue Water, um, you know, we, Hannah and I have been talking with Lincoln Avenue Water. Maybe Hannah wants to chime in, uh, but, um, you know, they, they haven't made an official statement here yet, but they definitely had mentioned they are willing to, um, use this opportunity as well to work with the community. You know, on any solutions to, again, the partying and different things that tend to happen with the beautiful views going on at the Lincoln Avenue Water. Hannah, did you have anything else to say?
Um, not really. We, we were hoping they would give us, uh, an official statement. Um, just kind of clarifying all these points, but unfortunately they have not for whatever that indicates to us.
Okay. Um, Dorothy, are you ready for a motion? Are there any more, I, any more questions? Okay, um, Dorothy, do you want to go ahead and do a motion? Are you ready for that?
Well, based on the feedback from the community, which, uh, again, was, we need better coverage. Um, I would probably think it would be good for us to move it forward. The, my only hesitancy would be uh, the health studies, but then, uh, Mr. Calisi brought up the FCC and, and different guidelines.
So we are, we as an organization are not able to take the health issues in, um, in our, into consideration with our, um, voting. Uh, what we do know is that they are required by the government to meet certain standards and that they will go ahead and do that. Um, and that will be regional planning and, and building and safety that will monitor that. With, with them, yeah, with the tower folks.
So that doesn't need to be written into a condition, so to speak.
Well, no, not, no, if, if, if when we write our letter down to county, um, what we often do is in the, in the, saying that we did not take it into consideration when voting, however, we did hear from two residents, however, I don't know, whatever it is, right, 510, uh, residents that they were concerned about the health thing. And then we've told them, but we've also told them that per what we're supposed to be doing, we didn't, um, take that into consideration for the
And, okay. And as it relates to access, that's a separate issue as well. From, from our vantage, is that correct?
Well, yeah, because there's, uh, easements that are, um, you know, granted, so we, we, we don't have any input on those easements, so. I do have one proposed condition. If you don't have any.
Good, that's good.
Um, uh, Dorothy, I, I think we should, uh, restrict construction to working days. Uh, on other projects, we've said between, uh, 8:00 AM and, and 6:00 PM. So it's just slightly off from our standard, uh, construction, uh, which starts at seven, but, uh,
Thank you.
We actually do only nine to three and we don't do weekends for construction. We, we like to still, we like to put that in there.
Understood.
Yes, but we can put in nine to three.
Yeah, if you want to say nine and three, that's fine for me, but we've had, we've had issues with other, uh, construction of this nature, um, at other locations that are near, um, uh, residential properties, right? So Right. Well, no, what I'm saying is that it's, it's part of the building and safeties, uh, issuance rules, the construction times and, and dates, so
Yeah, so often what we do is put our, put it in again to right, to let regional planning know that we're, that's important to us.
Absolutely.
We can, we can put it in as a condition.
So is the condition nine to three or?
Yeah, nine to three, five days a week. I mean, well, Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday, yeah.
Thank you for bringing that up because, uh, a resident actually mentioned that. So thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. So, um,
Okay.
Hannah's usually really good at reading the motion.
And then add the, um, if you're gonna do that Hannah, then at the end, you know, do your motion, then say with the condition of construction only nine to three from Monday through Friday.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, uh, in regards to PRJ 2021-003748, AT&amp;T, Altadena-002 at 4554 El Prieto, uh, in Altadena, um, the council, uh, proposes that we vote in support of AT&amp;T building a sectorized small cell site at the Lincoln Avenue Water Company property located at 4554 El Prieto with the condition that construction for this project only occur between the hours of 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM weekdays.
And I would, did you say to send it to the town council?
Um, well, I said that, uh, well, the, I propose that the council votes in favor of this proposal.
Recommend, recommend, recommend to the Altadena Town Council that the project be, yeah.
Recommend, okay, so we propose that the Altadena Town Council recommend, uh, recommends approval of, uh, these said project.
Sort of, yeah.
Good enough.
That's good, yeah, that's good enough, okay. Um, okay, so we're, uh, does everybody understand what the, what the motion is? Okay, um, all those in favor of, uh, recommending approval to the town council of this project with one condition, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, opposed? Abstain? Okay, great. Thanks so much. And Dorothy, thanks for all your hard work on this. And Adrian, thanks for clarification of some things. And Hannah, thanks for your reading of the, appreciate your, your participation too. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna move on to Madeline and Alan. And if you want to drop Adrian, now you can, that's fine.
All right, well, great. Thank you, everybody. And have a good evening. Appreciate your time.
We really appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Okay. Madeline.
Hi there. Thanks, everyone. So we have a project in our, in our district, uh, this is track 4611. It's project R P P L 202101571. Um, the address is 539 East Mendocino and 525 East Mendocino. Dave Hanson and his wife Tracy have owned 539 East Mendocino since 1998 and have raised their family in their lifetime home. Uh, they purchased 525 East Mendocino in 2012 um, at the time of the owner's passing in order to, uh, avoid a dispute over the property line between these two properties that would have completely been disrupted to the use of their historic home and property. Um, they wanted to speak with the land use committee to discuss the variance application. Um, it requires no change and no construction in the use of the property. They're looking to officially adjust the property line to reflect the way that it's always been since, uh, 1962, when the lines were divided. So with that, we have Dave Hanson, um, Tracy Hanson, and we also have Stanley Lamport from Southwind Engineering who will give us a presentation. I'll hand it over to you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, uh, for your time. We appreciate it. We've been a longtime Altadena uh, residents and, and neighbors, uh, and, and our families lived there, as Madeline said, uh, since they, their whole lives and until their, their college time now. Um, and what we're simply looking to do, um, you know, originally 1919, our home was built, it was on a huge lot. In 1961, it was subdivided to meet the 10,000 foot, uh, square minimum lots, and they subdivided those lots. It, it ended up, uh, in, in fences being built and different things going on. And we're really looking to, uh, continue to use the properties the way they always have been. The lots, uh, part of the 525 property, we'll get into in the presentation. Um, the backyard of that property is really only accessed by the 539 property, which is where we live. And, uh, and we bought the 525 property in 2012. At that time, the, the person that was living there, Nancy, she had lived there since she was born. So she, so that these houses have never been sold since they've been subdivided or this particular house. She was, she was, uh, she was raised there and then had inherited that property with the condition that if she ever moved, that her siblings would, uh, would get the benefit of that property. So she, she lived there until she passed away. And then, uh, we immediately, as I put the property up and you could see it on Google, people immediately started trying to walk into our, our backyard uh, to get access and, and purchase the property. And we, and the only way we found to resolve it was actually purchase the property in 2012. So, um, I'm gonna share, um, a, a deck that, um, that we've, uh, that we've sent around previously to the meeting, um, and just go through it quickly. And, uh, and I'm happy to, uh, answer any questions. Stan Lamport's here too, who's our, our friend and attorney, who's, uh, uh, who knows all the rules and regulations and has helped us through the county and, and can, uh, talk about our meetings with the county too. So, uh, I'm gonna try to successfully share screen, so bear with me. This is not working for me.
Which one are you trying to share?
I'm trying to share, share the, uh, the, the PowerPoint that I sent.
So the PowerPoint is open on your screen?
Yeah, but it's just, it's asking me, I literally have a new computer and it's just asking me.
It's a sun around, because I have the PDFs, but I don't see a PowerPoint in there.
The PDFs are the same thing, actually.
Oh, which one's the photos or the?
Oh, well, actually, that's a different one. There, there should be Madeline that the, the
Yeah, I can, I can, let me, let me pull it up. Here with me a second.
Yeah, we'll see if somebody else can share for you.
Apologies here, everyone.
Let's do this as well.
I'm sorry?
I said, I'm trying to work on this as well, see if I can share it.
I have it set up. If you make me a co-host, I could probably do it.
Got it.
Uh, here we go. Stanley.
Yeah, there we go, okay.
Okay, so, so the, this is a, a, a view of the original, of the house that we live in. Uh, 539 East Mendocino, as it was originally built, uh, in 1919. Now there's a, a house in front of, in front of that, um, which is not part of this discussion. The, the, uh, 539 East Mendocino, when it was subdivided, it was, uh, it's a craftsman home. Uh, there was three additional lots built and, and they're all mid-century modern, uh, houses that were built in 1961. And, uh, so that's the view of, of that house. This is the location and you can see the lots illustrated. Uh, the red house, uh, lot is 539, the blue is 525. And, and just the, the, the upper skinny part of the lot line there, that's the part that is literally in our, our backyard. And that property line goes over the, the basement door of 539 East Mendocino. And there's also, which we'll see later in the presentation, elevation gain. So that part of the, the backyard of 525 is not even accessible from 525 at all. There's a fence and, and, and elevation gain and retain, and a retaining wall, uh, that separates the properties.
Mr. Hanson, are you able to make that full screen?
Um, let me see if I can do that.
Yeah, it's not, he's not sharing so bad.
Yeah, just the view there and, um, under, under the view menu.
Yeah, unfortunately, for some reason, the dropdown new menu, so I can't see it. Can't seem to close it.
Go back to home for a second. Uh, oh, the pre, you don't have the presentation button there. Uh, go over slideshow.
Slide show.
Yeah, click on slideshow.
I can't see the weird part is I can't get to slideshow because I've got the
Uh, you, I think you can do it right there. You see the little thing that looks like a presentation? Uh, a board that has the green play arrow on it. It's the last icon from, under the word animation on the toolbar. One, one over from the end.
Do they have to hit enable, enable editing?
Oh, no, it's a map.
Do they have to click enable editing? Never mind.
Hopefully what I did, but, um, it worked.
So this, this illustrates the four lots that, that So thi- this illustrates the four lots that, that, that comprise this kind of area and says, it's a flag lot, so the, the center lot. Uh, which is kind of blue, uh, pink, red and green. That's the five three nine uh house that we live in and we've have lived in nineteen ninety eight, but the, the other lot that is in blue. The, the top, the upper half of that, that's tall and skinny, that is actually the, the area, and we'll show it later in this presentation where we'll actually. Or there's the proposed lot line change, and again, there's no, there's no work to be done here except for paperwork. There's no engineering, there's no construction, it's literally to have the fencing and the lot lines reflect the way they've always been used since nineteen sixty one. When that, when these, when this, when these were originally subdivided. We could move to the next slide. Unless there's questions there. The, the preservation, there's some kind of, the black and white photos represent uh the house when it was originally built, the, the color photos. Are the house as it is today, um, and we've really um preserved what it is. We love the history of the area and uh, and it's been important to us, the, the, the bottom uh photo that you see, the garden area there. That technically belongs to five two five East Mendocino, but is only accessible to five three nine East Mendocino. And it is right up against the house, so, so that, that property line is, you know, you know, thirty six inches from the house, basically. And um, and it goes all the way to the back fence, so that, that kind of illustrates a little bit too, you've all been sent additional photos too, or uh. We can move to the next slide. This also shows the existing photos, um, I guess some of these didn't go through, but the, it's a little hard to see, but the, the, the top photo that you're seeing. Is a view from five two five East Mendocino at the back, and that's a retaining wall there. So there's an elevation gain, uh, or drop off to five two five, and, and so above that retaining wall is a chain link fence. And, and landscaping, um, and uh, and so it's not accessible at all. And you can also see an, an aerial view too, and then, and the, and the bottom right. This shows the topography. And this shows the proposed vision, so, so the, the, the existing parcels, that's the way they are, lots ten and eleven. The proposed parcels are the way they've been used again since nineteen sixty one when they're built. But that's not the way they are legally, and so that's, that's what we're trying to do, is get a variance. Which would lead to a lot line adjustment, so the, the properties can, can be used uh as they always have been and, and legally done that way. In the area, the, so the, so the issue is, is there's a minimum square foot uh of ten thousand square foot for lots in this area. But there's a hundred or more lots within a thousand foot uh radius of our home that are under, under this ten thousand square foot lot. Rule, and, and I think there are things that, that you may be working on as the land use council, just write uh, our property is on Mendocino Street. Just west of Santa Rosa. Just to give everyone a visual of it, to the, right behind our property, if you go over the fence to our neighbors who live behind us on our flag lot. Is the Altadena Senior Center. Like literally over the fence kind of thing, and so, and we're across the street from the Waldorf School. So um, yeah, so in our conclusion, we're just looking to get your support to help us fix a problem that was created from an original subdivision. That before there were the rules and regulations that there are today.
I can jump in real quickly, just to make the point, um, when the property was. Originally, see if I can move this around, so it's a little easier to, when the property was originally um subdivided, it was. This is at the time where four or fewer lots could be subdivided by deed, so there was no subdivision map act or anything else like that. So it created these rather unusually and oddly configured lots that met the minimum ten thousand square foot lot size. But didn't really have any practical relationship to the, to the, to the use of those properties. And they, and they were, they were, they were uh created around um the existing Whitney Residence that the Hanson's uh live in. So you, you got these weird lines that were, were created around the existing residence and were designed to keep the existing residence on. And so uh, that's how you created this sort of weird situation that where these, where you had two lots. That didn't have any practical, the boundaries don't have a relationship to the use of those properties. And because the rear of five twenty five is, in that rectangle, is above a retaining wall, it's functionally a part of the Hanson Residence. So what we did, um, in the course of, of designing this. Let's see if I can find it here, I apologize, but um, this, we set it up so that the square footage for the. For the new lot will be um, or for the, for the five twenty five would be brought down to sixty one fifty eight. Um, which uh is the reason for the variance, but we kept the, the lot size of. The Hanson's Residence under twenty thousand square feet, so there wouldn't be a possibility of re-subdividing the property for an additional ten thousand square foot lot. Um, and uh, uh, and of course, one of the questions is, are we uh, are some uh unusual. Or, you know, are you doing something that's unique to the area? Uh, there are over a hundred um, under uh ten thousand square foot lots in the area. It looks to me, and you, maybe you're probably more familiar with the history um, as residents. But certainly, the, the way it looks to me from looking at the history is that there was uh. In the, in, from the transition of the area era where Mariposa was kind of millionaires row. To the subdivision of these lots, you got a lot of small lots that were created, and I think in the, and as an attempt to. To prevent that, that trend from continuing, the whole area was, was uh rezoned for ten thousand minimum square foot lot. So you have a lot of, of um older lots, two that are, three that are um, on the same block. That are, are under um ten thousand square feet, so. Uh, it's not all that unusual, but the, but, but the practical point of this is, it, the lot line adjustment doesn't change what will exist on the ground. It doesn't create a situation where there would be a further subdivision of the property. It doesn't result in any reconstruction of anything on the ground, it simply creates a, a more practical relationship. Between the, the properties that the current lot lines don't uh allow for. So with that, we certainly take any questions if you have.
Yeah, now whoever's sharing, can they stop sharing?
I'm sharing, yeah.
Very good, excellent. Good job, um, okay, does anybody have questions? Let me ask a quick question first, Madeline. Um, have you guys been able to, you and Alan, sorry, have you guys been able to do due diligence around the property yet? And talk to any of those folks, the neighbors or?
No, not yet, we haven't, um, we haven't canvassed the area yet.
Okay.
Um, and we have not received any general comments about it either.
Okay, okay, so um, does anybody have any questions uh about the property? I'm looking for, I see Chris.
Thanks, Dan, uh, this, this might be a dumb question, and maybe I'll do something at the beginning, but do the Hanson's own both of the lots?
My question, terrible. Oh, you're muted, I think.
Yes, we own both peo- both properties, we bought the five two five property too, because we were stuck, we.
Okay, so you own, you own lot eleven and lot ten?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, so that's a good question, so. If, if the property line is moved, then none of the neighbors will even know it happened, right?
Nobody will know. Yeah, and, and so, uh, just so the committee knows, because, because I keep hearing this reference to ten thousand square foot. Is that what the county told you today? Or, I'm sorry, Chris, if I cut off another question that you had.
No, that was the zoning, when we started this process, that was the minimum lot size zoning for the.
Okay, yeah, because I just looked, it, it says it's five thousand, so I'm like, um, you know, this. It, I, I think it changed recently, and then, of course, the state has their own changes that are overweight on that. But um, but yeah, so um, just so the committee knows, this is definitely not our character matter fact during the C S D. We have the county print a map of all these uh very small.
Yeah.
Small odd lots, um, all over the, the, the um. Uh, town, because there were, there were um some rules that we changed to make it easier for some development. On lots that were really small, like, we're talking like two thousand square feet lots that we had. And so, you know, there's nothing, like, if this was happening today. Um, I, I understand they have to get the variance for the lot line, but today, they would have been able to create that smaller sixty five hundred. Or whatever you said it was, a six thousand odd square, square lot under our, our rules, it looks like, so.
Are there any other questions or comments? Um, based on what we know, and I don't wanna go outside of our processes. Um, and our plan was to have them come back in May and, and re-present after Madeline and Alan were able to do due diligence. I'm gonna give you guys the opportunity to, to see if you have enough information tonight to be able to vote on it. If not, that's totally fine, that our plan was originally to come back in May, Chris? Here, I'm mute.
I mean, just, just, just as a comment, I, I would personally be in favor of voting on this tonight, I can't see how this would matter to anybody anywhere. Um, other than the Hanson's who own both the properties, so if uh, if the majority of the committee wants to go for it, I'm on board.
Are there any other comments? Okay, um, Madeline, I'm assuming you don't have a motion ready?
No, no, Diane, that was my.
In the matter of. So if something, well, I'll, I'll do it, I guess, or somebody.
Well, first, hold on, we didn't hear from, this is Madeline's uh, uh census tract, is that okay with you?
Oh, I thought, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said yes. My apologies.
Yeah.
Yes, I, I, I did say that was fine, I did not prepare a motion for tonight, I was prepared just for the presentation. Um, and to.
Do you have, do you have the agenda up in front of you, or does anybody that could make a motion? I do, but. Here, I could share my screen, oh wait.
Alan, do you wanna make the motion?
I think we lost him.
Oh.
He's like frozen, I think.
Oh, okay, so, um.
Oh, I can actually, I can, um, I'm doing the minutes. I had pre-set up, um. So I could say, I could do the motion, cause I have like the number and all that.
So can you guys see my, can you guys see my screen?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I also have it in front of me, I could read it, so.
Who's that speaking?
No, you can't make the motion.
No, you can't make the motion. So the, I understand, so. Bless you, um, what?
I'm using your mic.
Bless you, um. Okay, so if somebody wants, if Madeline, if you wanna read this and just say, in the matter of R P L, blah, 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 application request, blah, 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 blah. The Altadena Town, uh, the Altadena Land Use Committee recommends to the blah, blah, blah without conditions.
Okay, in the matter of project R P P L two zero two one zero one one five seven one. Um, address five two five and five three nine East Mendocino. Say it again, what else do I say?
To, to allow, to allow one of the lots to become undersized relative to zoning requirements.
To allow one of the lots to become undersized, um, per the zoning requirement, I.
The, right, rec, I, I moved that the land use committee recommend to the town council to approve without conditions.
Okay, I, I moved to recommend that, recommend that the land use committee approve the project without. Um. With, without conditions.
Without conditions, right.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, I'm gonna have an offsite meeting on how to do motions, okay. It's alright, nobody, we, we struggle with them, okay, um, okay, so. I'm sorry?
No, I have the book on making motions.
Oh, okay, well, we're not, we, we wrote the book tonight on how not to make motions, okay. It's okay, as long as we get it to where we need it to go, and it's gonna go to the town council.
I seconded.
Uh, who's, I'm sorry.
No, Alan seconded.
Oh, Alan already said it.
Oh, Alan seconded, okay, so all those in favor of recommending to the Altadena Town Council. That the, that the, the project be, I'm sorry, recommended that they rec, that they recommend approval of the project without conditions. To regional planning, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Abstain? Okay, great, so we need you, we need you back next, we need you back in two weeks. At the town council meeting, so Madeline will get you that information.
Okay.
Okay, and, and most of the people that are here, if you're on town, if you're here and not on town council, can you try to share with the person you're sort of. Um, representing to make sure that they get all the information, and Madeline, you'll make sure they all get all the information as well. So that we can, so that we can go through it, um, we will have already, most of us here will have already seen it, so it'll be good.
Well, I'll swing around also that PowerPoint presentation as well.
Right, okay, yeah, that's great, okay, um, and send them, send them to the town council people, right, Madeline?
Yeah.
So, yeah. Okay, like, yeah, like Reggie and those guys, okay, um.
For the minutes, I'm, I, for the minutes, I'm not with Southland, I'm, I'm with a firm called Cox, Castle and Nicholson, but just so it get, it gets correct in the minutes.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, great, um, thank you, okay, so we'll see you guys in two weeks at the Altadena Town Council meeting. Um, and then that's the body actually sends the recommendation down to the um, uh, to regional planning.
Right.
Um, okay, so I did not receive any um, general public comments, but I think. You did, Dorothy?
I just forwarded you.
Oh.
Like, early, she sent it on Monday.
Oh, okay, I thought, okay, never, hang on, I thought you were gonna read it, but that's alright, hang on.
I can if you want, just have to find.
You probably have it closer to you than.
Maybe.
My apologies, uh, well, hang on, I'll find it.
And we conclude, do we conclude this item then?
Oh, yes, we are done.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, and Dorothy, is it just the one?
Uh, that made it in time for this meeting.
Okay, um, so I'm gonna read this email to everybody. Uh, regarding the four-story building. Why put a hu- why put homeless housing across from a liquor store, I'm sorry, this is from Arlene Bennett. Um, regarding the Figur- Figureroa and Lincoln Building, um, why put homeless housing across from a liquor store? What, what, what survey, was a survey done that the twenty nine Altadena homeless will reside there or still want to be on the street? Why four stories do not bring in homeless from other areas? Homeless people need to use the gifts of services and not be allowed to continue to harm themselves and others. Including property by living sun standard, living sun standard. Thank you. Uh, okay, so that was the only public, the general public comment that we got. Um, and so I did not get any. Um, messages about uh census tract reports. Unless anybody has any, they, no, nobody told me about a census tract report, so if.
Diane.
Dorothy.
I know, I'm causing trouble, did you mention the historic districting meeting?
Well, I, I didn't, um, it, okay, so in, in Sylvia. And um, in the forty six thirteen um census tract Bahadina. Um, there is an area that backs up to a Pasadena historical um area. And there are, they have been working with um, the historical uh preservation folks in the county. Um, to add some houses to that that are actually in Altadena. They, they did a, a community meeting today that I'm feeling like nobody showed up at, quite frankly. Um, and I know that there are some of the residents that are having issues with it. This has, this is not a land use item, this is um. Home preservation. Home preservation, the the homeowners make the decision as a group of whether they want to be in a historical district. And once they're in a historical district, then they have restrictions on what they can do to their houses and um, you know, all of those things that come along with historical districts. Um, I, they did mention, somebody mentioned about, oh, you know. Um. The subdivision of the houses and the ADUs and all that kind of stuff, and that's not the purpose of what they're trying to do, or if it is, it's not what they. Would be allowed to do, so um, but like I said, that's, they're, they're working through that. Um, I don't, I don't know what, okay, Daryl.
I just wanted to add that.
If this is not, since I, if this is not part of land use committee or in any, any part of our purview, is there anything reason why we need to continue this discussion? That's how you opened this up. You opened up this discussion, Diane, saying this was not part of.
Yeah, Dorothy asked me about it, in my census tract report.
Okay, sorry, I, I just, I just heard that you said this wasn't part of any land use committee or in land, land use.
It's, it's, it's not, but it's reported in my census tract, I guess, is what Dorothy was thinking.
Okay.
Go ahead, Dorothy.
Uh, and also in my census tract and others, the Jane's Village was also invited. Uh, because that, that has been verified by Sapphos uh to pretend, to qualify for historic.
It's all potentially out there, right? So, yeah, okay. Um, okay, so I will uh entertain a motion to adjourn, Daryl.
So moves.
Yeah, um, second?
I second.
Okay, thanks, Alan. All those in favor?
I.
All right, see you guys, see you guys at most of you in two weeks.